Wow, that's cool.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're called to order the June 22 meeting of our Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If y'all would stand with us, please. Commissioner Veronica Buchanan will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Veronica.
Let's bow heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we're thanking you for this great day that you have bestowed upon us. Heavenly Father, we're thanking you that you're great and almighty and all-knowing, dear God. We're asking you right now to bless us as we go into our meeting, crown our heads with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. And Father, please remember those over in South Carolina. Father, just be with them, hold their hands, do whatever they need to give them comfort, dear God. And Father, continue to bless our president, our local representatives, and all the officials that govern this whole world, dear God. This is my prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Call or roll, please, gal.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P. Steve Sandlin. Mike Vought.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, gal. This time I'll call on our Vice Chair, Mike Kush, for the reading of our May 26 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the meeting, the minutes, I have reviewed. I see no comments or changes, so I'd like to make, get a motion to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mike. Need a second?
Right.
All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir, everything's okay.
Are you real sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number, excuse me, item number six, waiver request. A, Jerry Warwick, item number 15-4005, requesting a fire hydrant waiver for property located along Vaughan Road.
Doug? Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good morning, Commission members. This first application is located on the north side of Vaught Road. The applicant would like to subdivide the existing six-and-a-half acre tract into two separate lots. You can see in your agenda materials, as well as the screen in front of you, kind of what they're wanting to do. Essentially, what they're wanting to do is create two lots here. This would be one lot, and then they'd do a flag lot here, 50-foot, which is what, which meets our requirements, and then a second lot back in this area. As far as the subdivision itself is concerned, and the zoning of the property, that's in order. The problem that they're running into is that the lines in this area will not support a fire hydrant, so they are asking for a waiver to that provision of the subdivision regulations before getting a surveyor involved in preparing the plat. If this waiver is approved today, when the plat is prepared, it will still have to come back before you, but it'll be for the same, same thing. It's just, we'd have to bring it through the Planning Commission, because we can't approve those administratively. But he'd like to know if he can get the waiver ahead of time before he goes through all the work for that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Those houses would have to be sprinkled, would they not?
Not on this one, since it's only two lots. If it was three or greater, it would, but not for just two lots.
Mr. Vought, that road's named after you. What's your wish?
I don't think it was named after me, but the motion to approve. How about that?
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 15-4005, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, submitted for preliminary plan approval, 7A, South Haven subdivision. The item number is 15-1007. 556 lots on 262 acres, zoned PUD, located along Ocala Road. South Haven Development Group LLC is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is probably a familiar piece of property to most of you. This is the South Haven Development off of Ocala Road. You can see, this is 840 here, down in this area. This is Ocala Road, back where it meets up with Old Shores and Almaville Road in this area. This is, excuse me, this is the master plan for the entire development's preliminary plan. This did receive zoning approval earlier this year. The applicant is going to really concentrate on this first section right in here when they start moving forward. This will be the first one we see construction drawings on and everything. Now, this plan that you see before you is what was approved at the Planning Commission. Now, that being said, we've been meeting with the applicant, and they have submitted an amendment, an amendment to this plan. There's going to be several changes to this, some of the layouts not going to look quite the same. They were able to get a few more lots, probably maybe a dozen to 20 more lots or so out of this. The changes, though, that we're going to be looking at, they have to go through the whole zoning process again, Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, but it's not going to affect this first section through here. After discussing it with the applicant, we said, go ahead and submit the master plan, the preliminary plan for this development. If for some reason the amendment doesn't get approved, you still have approval of this, but they understand that if they do get approval of the revisions to the planned development, they'd have to come back through with an amendment to the master plan. But again, that's not really going to affect them with Section 1, because that's not really what's being proposed to change. Again, there's several layouts, changes that they're going to see. For instance, one of the things, this is not going to, they need some, find some more soils. A lot of these lots are not going to be there. This is going to kind of end in this area. There's still going to be two access points. Another major change to the plan, originally, they were going to make some improvements here, Old Shores Road and Ocala, and then also at Almaville Road and Old Shores. Instead of doing that, they've actually obtained some land going through here, although they'll just take Ocala Road straight out to Almaville Road, which, quite frankly, from our standpoint, is preferable anyway. So that's actually going to be part of the development. But again, expect those changes coming. They will be on the night meeting next month to the, to the entire development, but that doesn't necessarily affect them going forward with this. Again, if for some reason that's not approved, this plan can, can go forward. This is what they were approved for. But regardless, Section 1, what they're looking at in this area, is, is pretty much intact. So from a planning standpoint, they've met the comments that we have. I think Mike's got a few comments he'd like to talk about from the engineering side.
Just, just a couple of comments. We've, we've talked to the design team, and they have been in contact with T-DOT about this connection, and they've got a verbal approval, but we'd like to get some more concrete approval from them for this connection, because with all the turn lanes, right-hand turn lane and left-hand coming from the north going into Ocala, it's getting awful close to the interchange at 840. We just want to make sure that they've, they've got approval to do that. And we, you know, as far as connectivity, that's fine with us, but we just want to make sure that they're okay. And they've got some tight side setbacks, I think just 15 feet between the buildings. Some places, you'll have to have storm drainage cross through the lots, and our minimum easement width is, is 20 feet. So we just, it's just an informational thing, just be aware of that, you know, when they come in with the construction plans, so they're not surprised that they, the building envelope won't fit. They'll have to make some adjustments, but that was just a informational comment. But other than that, they've, they've addressed all our engineering comments.
I notice our road superintendent's in the audience. Is he okay with that movement of that Old Shores Road coming straight out? Mr. Brooks, have you seen that?
Well, Old Shores will still be there.
Yeah, well, it'll, it'll become a secondary, though, to this.
Yes, yes, sir.
Now, I guess Almaville's a state highway, so I don't know if we, but, oh, but Ocala's a...
It was constructed by the state, but it's not a state road.
But it's, but it's a county road.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so is our road superintendent all right with that?
I think with the, with the modifications that Mr. Mike there is talking about, once we see, I haven't seen the actual plan for those, but I know that there's, you know, there's, there's a plan floating around out there. I just haven't seen it. But I, I think that it will probably, I feel comfortable that Mike can get us...
Mr. Hughes mentioned distance from, from the interchange, and that made me a little uneasy. I know over it, veterans were, Vaughan Road or whatever goes right beside it, I mean, it's, it's, if you get off the inner, the ramp and turn, it's almost like making a U right there, and sometime there's some conflict right there, and we want to avoid recreating a situation like that, you know?
Right. And they'll, this will come in with the, the first section during the construction plans, because they'll have to build this first, and we'll need to see that T-DOT approval from that.
As long as all of y'all are good with it, we can blame you if it backs up.
I'm used to it.
On that unnamed tributary, is that usually dry? Is it, is it an active stream?
It is, but there's a large drainage basin that, that rolls through there. When, when I walked it, it, it was dry, but that's been a few months ago. And it, it does have some flood, flood zones that they have to be aware of, so they'll have to have building pads and finished floor elevations when it comes adjacent to it.
Isn't enough there was any concern? I don't remember seeing detention ponds that close to any kind of a...
Well, they've, they've got them outside, the, the stream buffers, so they've, they've accounted for stormwater management areas all along here, so they're, they're in good shape with that. And, and we'll see the, the final designs at construction plan.
Mike, I hate to mention about the, about the light, but out here on Almaville Road, especially since it is a state road or whatever, but further on in this development, of course, now it's not going to require it.
Right.
But down further on back in this development, I mean, should there be a, a note or a, you know, where we look at this and review this, or send it to the state or something, and you want me to comment on that?
I do know that the traffic study recommended, I think it was a 75% build-out time period, where we come back and reevaluate for the signal. She said, right now, it doesn't meet it, but that's so many years down the road, the traffic on Almaville may change that, so that is planned. Yes, sir.
Because I know stacking lanes here in the morning, once you get this thing 75% done, it's going to be, it's going to be wild.
Well, in Ocala, where we're planning that extension, is going to have, I believe it's 300 feet of storage for a right turn lane, 300 feet for a left turn lane, then a full through, and of course, we're building right and left turn lanes out on Almaville. I don't remember those stacks off the top of my head, but we're doing substantial improvements up there to try to account for what you're talking about.
Okay.
Let me just ask a quick question while you're up there, that we approved this six months ago, something like that, right, Doug?
The zoning for it, yes.
Yeah. Is there anything that has really changed for us to consider today? Are we, are we looking at, Doug, maybe you can help me answer this too, but you made several statements that this little corner down in the right is what we're looking at, but we're also looking at a bigger picture kind of a thing?
Correct.
So just, just clarify that. What are we actually doing today?
Well, today, you're going to, if you move to approve this, you'll be approving the whole plan as submitted. If for some reason they want to make changes to the plan with that, for the, with the application I talked about just a minute ago, if those changes get approved, then they would have to come back with a revised master plan, and you would see that probably in, you know, sometime by the end of the year, I would guess. Now, if they, for some reason, started getting into it and decided, you know, we're just going to stick with the plan we have, we're not going to worry about making any changes, then they would still have this approval. So I was really letting you know the other information, just more for an FYI, that you knew it was coming, but today, I mean, this is what has been approved at the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, for the planned development zoning, so this is what you're considering. I think the point I was trying to make is just that if you move forward with this, just understand that there's probably going to be some changes coming, but they're not going to affect the first phase that they're looking at. So when they come back with a construction drawings and a final plat for this area, it's going to be as you see it on here. That part's not changing any.
Okay.
I may have blunted the water a little bit, not intending to, just trying to give you some information on it.
What about the line under the interstate, and what happened with that deal?
What, what was approved at planning, as well as county commission, was essentially that we would build as far as we can with fire hydrants, with the infrastructure that's there, and then if the area is not developed more to bring that line to us, we would continue on with sprinklers. And so that, that's currently still the plan.
Fire hydrants on the front end, sprinklers on the back end.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's years down the road.
Yes, sir.
The water situation could change.
Change drastically.
It'll take you eight to 10 years probably to get to that point.
I'd say that's being optimistic. I would, I'm sure they hope it's eight to 10 years, but...
Yeah, but the, so, yeah, that water line may be in by some other avenue by then.
That's right. Yes, sir.
As we review final plats as they come in, I mean, we're going to know that as every plat comes in, whether or not they're going to be able to be hydrant or they have to be sprinkled, so you'll know that going into it.
And at what point would the, would the new, would the Ocala Road be improved, the intersection? It's phase one.
With phase one.
It would be...
Our phase one construction, I think, is right at 40 lots. It's going to be done with that, along with running the water line to the site, and so we'll do all the improvements on Almaville, the Ocala Road intersect improvements, and then our water line extensions.
Thank you. Well, let me, let me, what changed the mind of CUD? Maybe you can answer this. From half fire hydrants and half sprinkler system, because it was a for sure no at an earlier meeting. I mean, we've been talking about this for years, but here in the last six months or so, then that, that's come to a head. What, what, what changed there? And I don't want to stir up anything here, but, you know, it seemed like we had a good plan headed in a, in a same direction, and then all of a sudden, everybody's happiness changed, and that's great. I'm just, what, what, what was the big deal there? Because personally, I liked the water that y'all, I liked what you had first planned and what you were going to do, but it was like a million dollars out of pocket, so, you know, it was a, a big deal.
I'll let Ms. Wood answer that. I won't try to predict what she thinks.
And I'm sorry, Planning Commission, if, if I might lie there, but I, it seemed like we had a good plan on the books, and then it just flipped. It just changed. And I think it may do something to the subdivision, and again, it may not. I hope it doesn't, so...
Jennifer Wood with Consulate Utility District. When we first were looking at this, if you guys remember, this was a night meeting discussion, and we got a lot of discussion about the step portion and the water as well, and fire hydrants and fire sprinklers. And when we originally did the hydraulic analysis for this, we came back with what it would require in order for them to move forward with fire protection in the form of fire hydrants for the whole development. And that's not what was decided at Planning Commission as far as what you guys wanted to do moving forward. So that was that cost estimate that we had given to Mr. Taylor and what we had come up with from a hydraulic standpoint to put hydrants in there for all, 552, I think, was the original submittal. So we presented the information that we had as far as from the water standpoint, and that's just not what was approved, so that's kind of what happened with that. For fire sprinklers and fire hydrants, that's what your question is regarding, yeah.
So, but, but one of the main things is we didn't want to split up the subdivision with sprinklers in the back end and, you know, fire hydrants in the front end. It looks like that's where it's headed now.
Sure, and I think we had some discussion about that, and that's, I mean, that's not CUD's requirement, you know, for fire sprinklers or fire hydrants. So previously, for subdivisions, fire hydrants were looked at. So whenever I did the analysis for the development as a whole, that's what I took in consideration, was the whole development with fire hydrants. That's when we talked about the line extension down, excuse me, down Shores Road to upgrade it to a 12-inch. That's what, that's what we presented from that standpoint. So we, I was just performing an analysis based on, on what had been approved at this body previously, and...
So CUD thinks within the next, well, get this first phase out of the way, in five, six-so years, depending on growth here, if we get fired back up in growth, which looks like we are, started that way, then this thing is going to be upgraded, and they're not going to have a problem, and...
It's possible. So typically, how we, how we look at things is evaluating from a capital improvement standpoint. So we've got about $80 million on the books for capital improvements in the less, in the next 10 years or so. So we look at areas as a whole. Typically, when a development requires a line extension that's just for their development and doesn't do anything for the area, or we don't have anything on the books for that area in the next, say, 10 years, that's something that the developer, just like for internal infrastructure, it would be an off-site improvement, the developer would, would have to pay upfront, so...
And that's where I'm getting at, then.
Sure.
So then the developer is looking at that, okay, you're looking in those next few phases, y'all may have to ante up and, and get that extension done yourself then, is what I'm, I'm just trying to be clear about the water.
I think, though, that what was approved before was fire hydrants and fire sprinklers as a combo.
Yeah, because what, the option that CUD, that Jennifer did through her analysis, gave us the option to either go offsite about a mile and a half, if memory serves right, and bring that line under the interstate, and then do all fire hydrants, or there was the option, if this body and the county commission were okay with it, to do a mixed system. And that was what we delayed the project, I'd say, three or four months back over the winter. And whenever we came back, that's what was decided and approved, that we could do the mixed system with anticipation that, it's a large development, you know, there's growth occurring out there. It may get there, and we may not have to do the sprinklers, but if the growth doesn't come, and this is the only thing really going in the area, then we'll do the sprinklers in the back half and go from there.
Okay.
And so that's still the plan.
All right. Thank you.
There's one piece of information that I have, that I don't know that it's public yet, but Smart is in discussion right now with a developer who's considering bringing water and sewer all the way down to Independent Road, which means that it could come from the other direction.
Motion to approve as presented. Subject to staff comments.
Second. A motion to approve in a second. That's also includes the road extension?
I would think, yeah.
Well, I mean, I would just approve as presented, subject to staff comments, which, yeah, I mean, that wasn't part of the original plan, really, but it only...
That's the only thing that's different from that. This is just basically a re, repeat of the original PUD.
At this point, yes, sir.
Of course, any changes are subject to our approval, so we could hold into this exactly if we were of a mind to.
You could.
Motion to approve, item number 15-1007. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 7B, Twin Oaks subdivision, that item number is 15-1008. 16 lots, 15 of which are billable, on 21.9 acres zoned RM, located along Twin Oaks Drive, Michael, Michael's Homes is the applicant. The waiver also, the request also includes a waiver request for fire hydrant requirements, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll see the plan in front of you on your screens. You'll notice one of the comments we had was there was already a Twin Oaks subdivision, so they've renamed this to Robin Estates, so this is the same development that you're looking at in your agenda packets. As you stated, 16 lots. You'll see in the back, they've got one for detention retention, which is why there's only 15 billable lots. They're wanting to develop this. The water lines in this area do not support the hydrants, so because of the size of the subdivision, this will be required to have residential sprinkler systems. You'll see later on in the agenda, we'll actually consider Phase 1 or Section 1 of this, which is these two lots right down here, just for a, just a little information purposes. But most of the comments that we have, have been addressed on this. I think Mike may have a couple of comments from the engineering standpoint, but I'll turn it over to him.
Okay. We've discovered a couple potential sinkholes. There's, what's that? Oh, okay. All right, there's, right here is a sinkhole that they've, they're showing now, but from the county topo, it looks like there might be another sinkhole right here. We'll need them to investigate that, make sure they address that. Let's see, and then just some minor housekeeping issues, but everything else looks like they're been addressed.
Mike, on a lot as large as the one you got your pointer on, I mean, how big a sinkhole are you talking about there?
It, it looks like it straddles the...
What will be the procedure, and I'm familiar with the property, and I don't remember...
Well, they, our rules say they need to have either a plan to close it or a conservation easement 25 feet from the throat of it. So it just depends on the size of, they'll have to go out and do some field run investigation to topo of that area and make sure it is or it isn't a sinkhole. County topo shows enclosed contour lines, so if it walks and quacks like a duck, it probably is, but this just needs to be investigated a little bit more. But they've got plenty of room to build outside of that area.
That's what I was, it's a large lot.
Yes, sir. It is a long, large lot.
It probably won't affect the lots, what you're saying, then.
No, it's, it's over, it's 1.28 acres, so they've got plenty of room. We just need to address that.
This is County Road. This is in private. Okay. Motion to approve with staff comments?
Second.
Have a motion to approve, item number 15-1008. Need a second?
You had a second from Buck.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I missed it. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 7C, Muirwood subdivision, Section 3, Phase 1, item number is 15-1009. 14 lots on 5 acres zoned RM with a previously approved conditional use permit. Planned development located along Rucker Lane. Tennessee Contractors Incorporated is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along the east side of Rucker Lane. This would be a new section of the existing Muirwood subdivision. This subdivision is served by sewer from Murfreesboro City, so they would require a approval from the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. For the most part, the planning comments have been addressed. I know that there are some comments, we had several from an engineering standpoint, and I'll let Mike, Mike handle those.
Okay. Actually, they've addressed our comments. One, one main thing is that we would have them bring a construction entrance off of Hamlet Drive for this phase and, and other phases. We've just recently topped out the main drive into the subdivision, Muirwood Boulevard, so we need to make sure it's, it's protected. But other than that, they've addressed our comments.
This is basically a city subdivisions, or any, you know, they're involved in that annexation lawsuit, which I guess is still floating out there somewhere, and it's been going on for eight or 10 years now, is it?
Just about, sir.
And it's still going, I guess.
Yes.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second. Have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 15-1009. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 7D, Northside Estates, the item number is 15-1010. 140 lots, 138 are billable, buildable, on 185 acres zoned RM located along Lascasses Pike. T and L Development is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along the east side of Lascasses Pike. The applicant is looking to develop about 140 lots or so off of this existing piece of property. It looks like only a portion of the property. When you look at your agenda materials, the map that was done, this development at this point's only encompassing a portion of this entire tract. The entire tract itself is, is fairly large, but it's only encompassing a portion of it. This preliminary is in two separate pages. Staff has several comments on this particular application. I know Mike's got several as well. One of the ones, let me just bring up this other page here. One of the biggest concerns that we have is you're seeing one access point here off of Lascasses Pike for this entire subdivision. Now, the revised preliminary plan that you have is showing a proposed second connection that looks like it lines up with, um.
Silverstone?
Yeah, it lines up with Silverstone Drive, which would be in here. Now, for this number of lots, though, staff is really concerned that one access is really enough for this many lots on the front end. That, that's one of the biggest concerns that we have on this. Uh, some other concerns that we have, uh, the applicant, when they revised the plans, did show the outline as far as the calls and the distances and everything, but there's nothing in here that says how big any of these lots are. The property is zoned R M and would require fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot size, but I can't tell by looking at this, unless I get a scale out, whether or not any of these lots meet that. Uh, so that's something else that we'll need to, to see on the plan. Uh, they're still working on, they've got several of the street names, several of the names that were in here were already taken by other developments somewhere, so they're still working with that, trying to, uh, get several other road names that are, uh, proper for this particular development that don't duplicate existing road names. We are gonna wanna see a traffic, uh, study for this, uh, development as well with a number of lots, especially being on a state highway like that. Those are most of the comments we have from a engineer, or, uh, from a planning standpoint, but I'll let Mike discuss the engineering ones. Okay.
Mike, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Just based on what you've said, this appears to be one of those plots that, that's not ready for us. There's too many, there's too many outstanding questions. We talked about this last time. They need to be further along, and they don't, don't need to have this many questions. There's no way we can approve this with that much unknown still out there. I think it needs to be deferred.
I, I agree. I think it needs to be.
Motion to defer.
Yep.
Second.
Motion to what?
To defer.
To defer, and a second.
Uh, can I make a comment on this one, too? I'm very familiar with the property, driven by it a million times, uh, been all over it with, uh, friends that used to farm it, and, and I've had a half a dozen people comment to me, the wa, the water flow crosses Highway ninety-six in the area of where the detention pond is. But I've had a half a dozen people that have lived there all their life, and they've said, what are they gonna do with all the water? So, my comment is make sure you get this drainage right, because there's a lot more water comes down through there than it would appear from, you know, from the eyeball. And the, the Schaefer property to the south and the William Pitt, William Pitt's property to the south of that, all drains this away, and will probably be ripe for development at some time. Uh, so, you know, I think a lot of consideration needs to be given there for this drainage.
That, that was my big concern, was the stormwater issues. You've got about a square mile draining to that point.
You, you're exactly right.
And, um, we've had some, uh, drainage issues. Let's go back to the previous sheet. With, uh, Two Hills subdivision, we had, we've had an, uh, uh, Public Works project to try to improve the drainage in here, and still haven't had much success with it.
Well, that was gonna be one of my comments, Two Hills is so old, it was done, you know, it was just done.
Mm-hmm.
And there's probably no drainage plan there, and there's probably a good bit of it drain. Now, if it encompasses the entire Pitt's property, it goes all the way back to Pitt's lane. I, I, I couldn't tell by this map, but, you know, I, I guess at some point there would be another outlet there on, on Pitt's lane.
We would anticipate that, yes, sir. I mean, quite frankly, when we met with the, uh, design engineer at the, before they ever submitted this, we thought we were seeing two separate entrances onto the Last Cassis Pike, and, I mean, I know they're showing a future one, but just with this many lots, I mean, that was one of the concerns that we had, so that's just a lot of lots.
And, I mean, Mr. Schaefer, his daughter's built a house there, as I understand it, and, you know, it may be fifty years before that develops too, so it, it could be a long, long time before you ever get that second entrance on Last Cassis Pike that lines up with Silverstone.
I would, I, I, I'm fine with deferring, and I would just hope that whatever Mike was gonna say the developers are aware of.
Yes, sir.
And if, you know.
They, they have our comments and.
Mr. Vault didn't get all that, because, because you were fixing to go on a spill about what all you had, and so as long as the developers have got all that, this'll come back to us a little more of a better package, or, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Vault. We can't count on that now, on that Silverstone Drive with that, that could, that could be generations away.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I, I don't think you can count on that, and, but I, I, in rea, honestly, I've had at, at least a half a dozen longtime residents say, what are they gonna do with the water? You know, so it's, it's, you, it appears to be flat, level ground, but there's a lot of feed from those hills up above and, and the property to the south, and then probably, I had wondered about the, the, uh, Two Hills thing, so your comments on that were my thoughts, so.
I'm sure Mr. Huddleston and Mr. Gerald are making kind of notes back there, and will have all this wrapped up for us.
Any other comments? We have a motion to defer, item number fifteen dash one zero one zero. All those in favor of that motion to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Item eight submitted for final plat approval, eight A, Waldron Crossing, Section Four. Item number is fifteen dash two zero four four, thirteen lots on five point six acres, zoned R M, located along Lebanon Pike, Waldron Crossing LLC is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And if it's okay with you, um, the comments I'm gonna make on this section are gonna apply for the next item as well, which is Waldron Crossing, Phase Five. Uh, the comments are pretty much identical, it's the same subdivision, uh, and actually in the staff comments, I, I address them as one, one item, but we would still need to have separate motions on both of them, but if you're okay with that, I'll just go ahead and do comments for both.
I would suggest that we go ahead and discuss both of them, and then have separate motions on them. Is that okay with everybody?
Thank you. Uh, these properties are located on the east side of Lebanon Pike. Uh, again, the comments for these plats are pretty much identical. Uh, separate motions, again, as you stated, would be required for both. Uh, these represent the last two sections of this development, so when these are finished, uh, this subdivision will be completely built out. The plats are actually in very good order. There was really just a couple of minor, or really just one minor, uh, housekeeping matter. There was a north arrow, I think, on the next plat, Section Five, that was incorrect, that they have fixed. Uh, it was, it was, again, it was something real minor, but the plats themselves, uh, they are consistent with the preliminary that was, uh, approved for this development, and, uh, both of them are in, are in very good order now. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Take, uh, uh, item A fifteen dash two zero four four first.
Motion to approve with comments.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposition? Item number B fifteen dash two zero four zero.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you.
I've got a question, just trying to refresh my memory. It seems to me, Mr. Moss, when this first came in several years ago, they had stubouts to the surrounding properties, and that was gonna make them put a traffic signal or do road improvements, so.
Turn lane, yes, sir.
In order to avoid that, they cul-de-sac everything.
Correct.
I think that's the most ridiculous rules that the state has I've ever seen, 'cause stubouts would be better to access the other properties, in my opinion. You know, they have interconnectivity and all, but, you know, that's ridiculous, in my opinion, and I just won't.
And I would, I would.
What Golliver is saying, I believe I said that several years ago, but they changed the plat and no turn lanes, no traffic light, but now those people have one way in and out, and they'll never be connected in any other development forty years down the road.
And I echo your sentiments on that. Uh, if this were to come in today, I don't know if we would get the same, you know, there's different leadership up at T-Dot now, they have a different, you know, way of doing business now. But I remember when that came in, you know, they were wanting, the state was wanting us to submit some sort of a letter saying that these addition, that these tracks that they were stubbed out to would never develop in the future. And I basically told them, I said, there's no way I can guarantee you that. I said, it, they may not develop, like, we were talking about that last year, they may not develop for fifty years, you know, I could be dead and gone, and then, you know, it, it could start developing, I can't make that kind of a promise. So, that's why they ended up having to bring that plan back without the stubouts. But, again, this comes in today, that, that same situation may not happen, I don't know, but I agree exactly with what you're saying.
That's my soapbox for the day, sir.
I know you will, that might not be your.
Might not be the last.
Item eight, uh, C, Twin Oak Subdivision, Section One, the item number is fifteen dash two zero three zero, two lots on two point four acres, zoned R M, located along Twin Oaks Drive, Michael's Homes is the applicant. This also includes a waiver to our fire hydrant requirements, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as we talked earlier, this is the Section One for the Robin Estates preliminary plat that we, uh, saw on the agenda a little earlier. Uh, this is for the first two lots of the subdivision. Uh, you'll see on Lot Two, they are showing a conservation easement here for the sinkhole. Uh, depending on the outcome of the, uh, investigation into the sinkhole in this area, there may have to be some additional work done on Lot One here, just, uh, note, putting a note on here, or something similar over here, that a conservation easement needs to be, uh, placed on this lot as well. Uh, as, they're both marked as critical lots as well, as you can see here on the plan. Now, as you recalled from our earlier discussion, uh, this subdivision will have to be sprinkled because of the fact that, uh, this, the water lines in this area will not support the hydrant. Uh, they will need to add a note to the plat stating that, uh, the houses in this section will need to be sprinkled as well. Uh, other than that, the, uh, the plat has, uh, met the comments we had, it appears to be in good order.
I, I was just wondering, I'm sitting here looking at six driveways plus a street pulling out on a Twin Oak Drive. Twin Oak Drive's a fairly narrow road. Would it be in our purview, or even a good idea to require lots three and fourteen to driveways off Robin Court?
I think we did make that as a comment, actually.
That is, okay, I don't see that on any of this, but that would avoid conflicts, more conflicts on that small road.
Yes, and I think, uh, if that note's not on here, we'll just have them put that note on there, but that was a comment that we had on, on the preliminary of this. So, eventually, when we get to that, that wouldn't be on here necessarily, 'cause that's a little further over now, but, uh.
I didn't have a plat on the preliminary, I just had a, one of two lots, and I didn't see it, but.
Right, but yes, that's very good comment, and we agree.
You're way ahead of me, as usual.
Other questions or comments?
Why are these critical lots?
Because of the sinkholes.
Oh, does it only have the sinkhole on one?
Well, that's.
Potential for.
Yeah, there may be.
Potential on, on Lot One as well.
So, we're gonna have them look at that, based on, on the preliminary, and if it shows up, then they'd have to put it on here, too.
And if there's not a sinkhole, we can have them remove it as not a critical lot.
Motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Motion to approve and a second, item number fifteen dash two zero three zero. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Item number eight D, Welch subdivision, uh, item number is fifteen dash two zero three nine, two lots on eight point nine acres, zoned R M, located along Independent Hill Road, Albert Green in care of Jamie Reed. Are the applicant's waivers, includes waivers to the fire hydrant, uh, requirement easement width and minimum acreage on a private easement requirements, Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, as you stated, this property is located along Independent Hill Road. Uh, Mr. Reed, this is actually, I believe, part of his property, as, as I understand it. Uh, quite frankly, we had so many comments on this particular plat, uh, it wasn't, uh, yeah, it, it's amazing it's even on your agenda right now, to be quite frank with you. No, I'm kidding, I'm just, I'm just giving, I'm just giving Jamie a hard time. Just giving, just giving Jamie a hard time.
Had a lot of calls about it.
Yeah, we've had, yeah. So have we, it's been unreal.
It sounds like a motion to defer from staff.
No, essentially, what's going on here is there's an existing house located on Lot One, and this remaining acreage in the back is gonna be combined with adjacent property, uh, at some point in the future, but, uh, right now, it's just gonna be subdivided into two tracks. Well, uh, because of that, this is becoming a subdivision lot. It's under five acres, it's only gonna have a twenty-five foot access easement for now, and it doesn't have a fire hydrant capability within a thousand feet. Now, when this is combined with the remaining acreage in the area, that's not, a lot of that's gonna be moot, and it's gonna go away. But, uh, for now, since he's creating this lot here, and then this is gonna be a separate lot in the back, he's needing the waivers just to affect this for now. But again, over time, most of these waivers will be moot, so, uh, with that, Jamie is